Steps communities can take to prevent the spread. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter thirty A, section twenty, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. And to participate remotely from a complete computer, you can click on the link that is listed on the agenda for tonight's meeting, or you may dial in on the phone number also listed in the agenda. First order of business will be to call the meeting to order and take a roll call. I John to Fethan in present.
Hi Brian Forrestall in present.
I Nathan Band in present.
Hi Stuart Siegel in present.
Anton Kamirov in present.
Excellent. All present and accounted for. We have three continued hearings on the agenda for this evening, this evening. First order of business will be the continued hearing on two forty-two Pond Street. The public hearing was opened at our November twenty-second meeting. And I will read the notice, the Ashland zoning board of appeals will continue the public hearing to hear the petition of Walter Torres requesting a special permit in variance per chapter forty A, section nine of the Massachusetts zoning act and chapter two eighty-two, sections three parenthesis, principal uses close parenthesis, four parenthesis, dimensional requirements, close parenthesis, seven point one parenthesis dwelling conversion, close parenthesis, and nine point three parenthesis, special permits, close parenthesis, of the Ashland bylaws to allow for the conversion of a single family dwelling into a two-family dwelling. The property in question is located at two forty-two Pond Street, assesses map twenty-six lot two forty-six, and is within the highway commerce zoning district in Pond Street mixed use overlay district. And I see familiar faces representing the applicant from our previous meeting. Could you please just identify yourself that you are present tonight?
I am Clay Johnny Torres.
Yeah, I'm Walter Torres.
Thank you. Welcome back, folks. At our meeting last last month, we continued the hearing in order to obtain a clarification from the building commissioner about the the application. The application basically seeks to convert a garage into a into an apartment or a house, and thus to convert the existing house on the lot to a two-family home. And as I indicated, we sent out the request for the building commissioner and we received his response dated November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Ms. Torres, did you receive a copy of that letter from Mr. Scott?
Yes, yesterday I contacted Mr. Peter Metcalf and he submitted a copy.
Okay, very good.
And just to clarify, it's not to convert the garage, but it's to convert the existing room above the garage into a two-bedroom unit.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. The letter from Douglas Scott, our building commissioner, will go into the record along with the other documents. And for purposes of the public, I will read the letter. It's not terribly long, dated November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, addressed to the town of Ashland zoning board of appeals regarding two forty-two Pond Street. Dear board members, the question as to whether the two buildings in the lot are considered to be a single structure, parenthesis, building has come up. Currently, both the house and the garage are attached by an open deck slash walkway. Under the zoning ordinances, colon, a building parenthesis, in this case, a S F H and a garage, close parenthesis, are to be quote, any structure or part thereof enclosed within exterior walls or firewalls, comma, built, erected and framed of any combination of any materials, whether portable or fixed, having a roof or similar covering, whether or not permitted in nature, closed parenthesis. The neck connect, the deck connecting the two is not considered a quote, building unquote. As submitted, the two buildings are not considered as one. Granting of the approval requested would allow two single-family homes to be on the lot, which is not allowed. Sincerely, Douglas Scott, building commissioner. Okay. Ms. Torres, would you like to offer anything further before we open the matter for either further questionings from the board and then public comment?
Yes, so upon reading, upon reading this letter from him, I had called him a week after the meeting and I asked him, you know, what his opinion would be and he didn't say anything about it. He just said that he had sent you a notification. So I wasn't aware of this until yesterday when I talked to Pete, when I emailed Peter and he sent me a copy of the letter. So we would like to ask if we redesign, like if we do the plans again and it's in in the place of the deck, the existing deck, we create a like sunny room or like a three weather.
Three season.
Three seasons, sorry, three season room. If that would make the the two buildings attached, if that would be a possibility to redesign like the structure and kind of touch, because in our thinking that that would be enough. But according to him, it's not. So we would like to know if we redesign, if that would be a possibility.
Well, I think what the plans that have been presented to us are what we're what we're here to to deal with. I don't know that we can continue the hearing to allow you to submit new plans. Peter, would they have to withdraw and then refile?
Yes, I think the number one, you know, just to add in Peter Matri Town Planner, that was the case. I think that would, you know, from my standpoint, the best route forward would be if the applicant requested a requested a withdrawal without prejudice. And so therefore, the planning of the zoning board appeals could say, accept that withdrawal without prejudice. And then the applicant could therefore work on the plan and to therefore come back in front of the board. When they come back in front of the board, they would also have to re-notify and go through that process notifying the brothers, putting the ad into the newspaper. So it's almost like a new application, but therefore it's not a true definition of a denial.
Right, because if there were to be, if there were to be a denial, they would have to be a is it a two-year waiting period?
Two-year waiting period before you can refile. And so therefore, if the applicant was to do that, I think then they could come back, you know, sooner than the two years more to.
Okay. You know, I guess before I I'm going to ask the other board members their thoughts on this, but I know based on what was presented at the last hearing. I'm not sure that
Ask other board members their thoughts on this.
Is going to be met with success. I don't want to, based on what was presented at the last hearing path of a further expense only to come back before us and and know that it's going to be denied. But let me see what the other board members say. Brian, what are your thoughts on allowing the applicant to withdraw without prejudice at this point? And if if they choose to come back with a new plan, they can they can do so as part of a new new hearing process?
I don't think it hurts us at all to allow them to withdraw without prejudice and go back to the building commissioner with new plans and ideas and see what they come up with. That's perfectly acceptable to me.
Okay. Nathan, your thoughts?
I have no problem with the idea of allowing a withdrawal without prejudice. My only concern, and it's a minor one, is that this not become something that's done as a matter of course, every time there's a a proposal that comes up that isn't going to be accepted, you know, we'd end up with a a lot of proposals coming up, getting denied, coming up, you know, I don't want I don't want our docket to be filled with resubmittals from here on out. So I think as a one-time plan, this is fine with the understanding that, you know, if there's another plan that comes before us, this isn't going to be how we handle it every time.
That's fair, fair enough. Stu, your thoughts?
Didn't the town council also comment on this case?
No, that was the that was on Zero Prospect Street.
It was? Okay, I have no further questions.
Okay. I have no, no objection to your being allowed to withdraw without prejudice, which means that your present application is not being denied. And then it's up, you're free to revise your application, go through the process and come back. Just so that you understand by are allowing you to withdraw your application doesn't mean necessarily that we will approve a new application with a new plan. We'll give it, you know, a fair and open consideration, but it's not a an automatic guarantee, as long as you understand that. I'm pretty sure you do. The longer I continue to babble on it. Okay. Ms. Torres, we if you would just formally ask to withdraw the pending application without prejudice so that we could then vote on it?
Okay, so I would like to withdraw my application without prejudice.
Thank you. And we will now take a vote. And I John to Fethan vote aye.
I Brian Forrestall vote aye.
Hi Nathan Band vote aye.
Hi Stuart Siegel vote aye.
Hi Anton Kamirov vote aye.
Okay, that is five to nothing. Thank you very much. Peter, do you need a formal email from Ms. Torres? Or is the the verbal record we have and the video record we have enough?
Yeah, I'll take the verbal record's fine. Obviously, I'll write a memo up and I will attach the meeting minutes to it and I'll file that with town clerk. Okay, very. That will stand, that will stand as the public record.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Ms. Torres, thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you so much.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is nineteen Cedar Hill Road, continuance of a public hearing. As I get my paperwork under control here. This was also continued from our November twenty-second meeting. At that meeting, we we opened the hearing and the board had some questions about what exactly was before us and what our what our authority was and what we could or couldn't do. And we continued the hearing until today in order to obtain further clarification from the building commissioner and also from the town council. I will read the public hearing notice. The Ashland zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November twenty-second. This is the original one. Let me read the one for tonight's meeting. The Ashland zoning board of appeals will continue the public hearing to hear the petition of Kuru Valier and Radha Narayana, and again, my apologies for the mispronunciation, who have applied to the ZBA to appeal the building commissioner's decision under chapter, under chapter two eighty-two.
Excuse me, Chair. That, that I think is the next one. Do you're talking about the nineteenth Cedar or Zero Prospect?
Ah, you know what? I have jumped one and let me talk about nineteen Cedar because I anticipate that will take much less time than this one. So thank you, sir, for calling that to my attention. I apologize for jumbling everything up. So let me again go to my papers and hope we come up this time with the correct ones. Okay, it's a continuance of a public hearing involving nineteen Cedar Hill Road, continued from November twenty-second. I'll read the notice, the Ashland zoning board of appeals will continue the public hearing to hear the petition of Michael Sullivan requesting a variance per chapter forty A, section nine of the Massachusetts zoning act and chapter two eighty-two, sections four parenthesis, directional requirements and nine point two parenthesis, board of appeals of the Ashland bylaws to allow for the division of one non-conforming lot into three lots, two of which are non-buildable. The property in question is located at nineteen Cedar Hill Road, assesses map zero eight lot two oh one and is within the residential A zoning district. This matter was on for a public hearing. The applicant at the November twenty-second meeting presented his application. The board had the opportunity to ask questions. Public comment was called, was opened and closed with no public comment being received. And the board entered into discussion. And based on that discussion, we asked our assistant town planner at the time, Emma Snellings, to draft a hearing decision, which we would consider at tonight's meeting. Is there anyone here for the applicant, Michael Sullivan? Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing and enter into deliberations?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I John to Fethan vote in favor.
I Brian Forrestall vote in favor.
Favor.
I'm sorry, Nathan, I didn't hear.
Sorry, in favor, Nathan.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, sitting on the hearing are Brian Forrestall, Nathan Band and myself. We've each had an opportunity to review the draft decision. Did anyone have any proposed changes? Brian? Okay, that was a no. And Nathan?
None.
Okay, it looked, it looked fine with me. And we then now have to formally take a vote. And as I understand it, the the motion has to be made in the affirmative, which would be a motion to approve the applicant's request for a variance. And then we each vote upon that that motion. So would someone like to make a motion to approve the request for a variance?
So moved.
Nathan, would you like to second that?
Seconded.
Okay. And then voting I John to Fethan vote no.
I Brian Forrestall vote no.
I Nathan Band vote no.
Okay, then the application is denied. Peter, we obviously have to sign the the decision. Do you know when it will be when it will be ready at town hall to sign?
I can have it ready tomorrow, you know, early in the late morning, if you, if you're available to come by and sign it.
Okay, and note that in the draft decision, Emma had listed the vote as being one to two, and in fact, it is zero to three.
I will make that change.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that being said, the hearing decision is completed and that takes care of that. Now moving on to the fourth item on the agenda, the Zero Prospect Street public hearing, which was continued from November twenty-second. And the Ashland zoning board of appeals, this is the notice, the Ashland zoning board of appeals will continue the public hearing to hear the petition of Kuru Valier and Radha Narayana, who have applied to the ZBA to appeal the building commissioner's decision under chapter two eighty-two, section three point three, parenthesis, non-conforming uses and structures, close parenthesis, section six point three parenthesis, driveways and section nine point two point two point three board of appeals, along with any other applicable sections of the Ashland zoning bylaws. The decision states that a driveway shall not be located within five feet of any side or rear lot line and that the application does not provide a compelling argument to grant a variance. The property in question is located at Zero Prospect Street, assesses map twenty-nine, lot thirty-four in the residential A zoning district. Parties wishing to be heard in this matter should appear at the time and place indicated above. And as I had started to indicate, when the hearing was opened on November twenty-second, the board had questions concerning exactly what was before us, what we were required to do and what information we could take into consideration in making that decision. Subsequent to our November twenty-second meeting, we received a letter from the building commissioner dated November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and also an opinion from town council. The letter from the building commissioner will become a part of this hearing and the communication from town council will remain private. The letter from the town building commissioner is as follows, dated November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, town of Ashland zoning board of appeals regarding Zero Prospect Street case, dear board members, board members, I was asked by Emma as to whether this particular case is one that a variance would need to be granted, should you decide my determination should be overruled by the board. This case is not about dimensional requirements. It is whether the applicant submitted enough information to show that he should be able to build his driveway on the property line and not five feet from the side property line. As I stated in my original letter to the applicant, quote, whenever possible, unquote, is the language used in the zoning ordinances. Therefore, even though he is providing the board with new information that I was not privy to, you may use this information to consider what he proposes. The board may listen to information that he did not present to me so that they may make an informed decision. There is no need for a variance or any other relief from the board except for the board's approval or not to move the driveway. And opinions we received from town council was that this was not a variance issue, that the issue is whether the building inspector made the right determination under the bylaw and that the applicant may present and the board may consider additional information which may or may not have been available to the building inspector and that our decision requires a unanimous three votes of the members of the of the ZBA. At the November twenty-second hearing, we opened the hearing with Brian Forrestall, Nathan Band and myself sitting. But we did not take any evidence from the applicant, nor did we open the matter for public comment. So that being said, Mr. Narayana, if you would like to make your your presentation, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want for the record that I had originally requested a variance based on the suggestion that Doug Scott had given me in March of two thousand twenty-two and pursuant to getting his letter of denial, which said that I need to appeal. That's why I filed the appeal. It was modified based on Emma Snelling's request that I should change the variance to appeal and the submission that was done on November one was for an appeal. But the request is for a relief from the five-foot setback. That's, I just wanted to give a short intro on that one. And can I share my screen if that's permitted?
Peter?
Yes, I have made you a co-host. You are free to share.
Thank you, thank you. Is the screen visible to everybody?
No, it's a zoom screen. Your screen is now visible.
Now visible?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. This is the locus of the land. The Zero Prospect Street, to say, about two hundred and twenty feet away from the Holliston Ashland borderline. And this parcel is bounded by residence properties to the east, west and south. And an undeveloped forest land on the north, and you can see a expanded map. This is the property here, and these are all properties on the Raymond Way. And this is the Prospect Street, and here is the undeveloped piece of land. And all of my land somewhere here is a Wernholz pool, if you can see that. The lot area is about forty-six thousand square foot plus. And the wetland portion is about twelve thousand forty-two square foot. This leaves about thirty-four thousand two hundred and twenty-five square foot as the upland, which is more than the thirty thousand required for the zoning for any property to be built on. And it's definitely more than twenty-three thousand upland required by the zoning law. The frontage is hundred, hundred feet in the required minimum during in this zone is about hundred and fifty feet. However, in May of nineteen ninety-three, there was a town meeting resolution passed which permits a waiver for this dimension requirement and grants the stuff, the local properties which were built around nineteen eighty-eight, all of them have lower area as well as the lower frontage. And then we are far above this limit and then I'm qualified to get this waiver because of that town meeting resolution. And the basis of it, excuse me? Hello?
Excuse me. Mark Sullivan. Excuse me, Mr. Walsh, just to step in, Peter Matri Town Planner. Right now, we are not taking public comment and there's no need to interrupt. After Mr. The presentation, the zoning board of appeals will be opening up for public comment.
Thank you, Peter.
Sorry, sir. I had received a letter from the building inspector. There were two remarks, one pertaining to the upland area that needed and that got rectified, even though he had the document on the plan with the wetland information. It was not easy for him to decipher that. So I gave the explanation to him after that. And it also says that he's denied, he assumes that the basically stated financial hardship. I've never stated in my application any financial hardship. The only reason that I'm shifting is because of the wetland presence as well as the natural resource of Wernholz Pool. Shifting the driveway, access driveway by five feet does not reduce the cost. It's going to cost me the same to build a bridge as well as the street. So that's not a reason that I'm applying for. And this is the map of the wetland map of the land resource, and this is where the Wernholz Pool is. There's only hardly about seven feet of There's only hardly about seven feet of the land that is available for me to construct a dry feet on a dry land. I have to build the bridge across this Vernal Pool, and all of this bridge structure should be on a helical file so that.
Please, we we, we're not going to be able to continue this hearing if there are going to continue to be interruptions to the applicant's presentation. The way we are going to proceed, and let me be perfectly clear about this, is he will have an opportunity to make his presentation. Whether you agree with what he's saying or not, you will have an opportunity to comment later on. But please don't interrupt the process. Once he finishes, the board members will have an opportunity to ask questions. And once we're finished, the matter will then be open for public comment. It will be a reasoned public comment in that people will raise their hands. And Peter, our town planner who was presiding at the meeting, will recognize you and allow you to enter the meeting to make public comments. That's how we're going to proceed. It's a very simple process. It always works for us, and I'm hopeful we can continue in that vein tonight. Okay? Thanks. Go ahead, sir.
Given the conditions here, it is necessary for me to cross the wetland. We wanted to avoid crossing the wetland, and then we did request the neighbors to see whether they will provide an access to the land through the Raymond Way using an easement. Both of them denied it, so the only alternative is right now is to cross the wetland. And in order to cross the wetland, we need to minimize the disturbance to the impact of the wetland, and the, one of the solutions is to put a bridge across on a helical pile so that the disturbance is very minimal. That's what we're considering, and then initially I had opted to have a twelve-feet wide road based on the general recommendation. And we decided that twelve feet is too much to disturb the wetland, and then we reduced it to ten feet, which is required for any fire truck or any major truck to pass through to the construction area, which is on the rear. Now, if we get this waiver of zero feet, then there is a substantial savings in the disturbance to the wetland. Five hundred and twenty-three square foot to one forty, which is about seventy-three percent. And I have a table which enumerates the different levels of savings based on where this, the driveway starts. If it's zero feet, which gives you a hundred and forty square foot savings, which is, which is only a hundred and forty disturbance, and then that's seventy-three percent savings. And if you go to zero, that is five feet to maintain the zoning board requirement, then the gain in wetland impact is zero. And here is a picture which shows the wetland area disturbance based on the reduction of the five-foot setback, and this one is without the setback requirement, given waiver. Here is a comparison, this with the relief, this is without the relief. This is seventy-three percent savings. And in the town, we have seen that the town has given various types of setbacks, relief through ZBA or the building inspector. Some of the examples are installing sheds, rear and rear setbacks, and all of these things, and also the zero-foot driveway setback has been given to Robert Hillway on October twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen. And if you go and drive by several properties in the prospectus areas, these listed properties have zero setback or close to zero setbacks on the driveways. I would appreciate if the board can approve it and provide the relief, and this will not substantially make it more detrimental to character the neighborhood. It would simply be the same as what the neighborhood is currently, no change in the neighborhood conditions. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will now have questions by the board. Brian, why don't we start with you? Any questions for the applicant?
Uh, yes, I'm, uh, it's just, how, how long have you owned this property?
Two thousand eight.
All right, and when you purchased the property, you knew that there was Vernal Pools and Wetlands and so on?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
And Nathan, how about you?
Um, so I guess I'm curious about the, the root of the driveway and is it going to be a zero-foot setback along the entire length of the driveway, or is at some point the driveway going to, once it's clear of the wetland, is going to move off of that property line?
The length is about two hundred and five feet, and then it turns to the left towards the house. Let me see whether I can put the plan back again, if you don't mind. Give me one second. This is the approximate location, the green one is the approximate location of the house, and this is where the driveway turns around. And I, I could probably turn a little bit earlier, but I'd like to avoid the twenty-five-foot in order to have been zoned as much as possible so that it helps the Vernal Pool and the surrounding areas. Thank you.
It looks like the large majority of the driveway is.
It is, because the, the extent of the pool as it goes from the street inwards is large. That's about a hundred and, hundred and ninety-three feet across there on the other side of it.
I understand the reasoning. I'm just trying to get a picture of the.
Thank you.
That's all I have at this time.
Okay, Stu, how about you?
Can the applicant further explain the construction of the bridge?
In terms of the structure itself?
Correct.
It will be on helical piles, so whatever goes on the ground is the helical piles, which could be about four inches or six inches, depending on the structural strength of the bridge. Bridge needs to carry the weight of a, at least a fully loaded fire truck. So that's how we want to structure the bridge.
Did you, did you say fire truck?
Yes, if I need to get a fire, accident happens on my property, I need to have a fire truck walking into the building area.
Okay.
And the structure will be low height because the elevations on the ground inside the parcel is low elevation as well as the street elevation is a lot, the, the difference is about four feet between the, the topmost elevation and the street elevation. So bridge cannot be too tall. It has to be low, groundhugging bridge.
And how does the wetland affect that, that height of the bridge?
Uh, it, it may not, because we had gone informally to the conservation commission to present a possibility of accessing, using a bridge with helical piles. They said they would look into it, and then based on how the design comes up, they will discuss the decision.
So this would have to go before the.
Of course, it has to go back again. All that we have done is we've done the wetland delineation. That means we know where the wetlands are, where the uplands are. That has been processed to them, so we have to go back before them to build the road and provide them the full information about what the cross-section of the bridge would look like. And they will have to decide on providing the access. If they say no, then nothing can be done. If they say yes, then we can proceed with construction.
I have no further questions.
Ian Tom, how about you?
Uh, my one question, so is the alternative just to bridge over the balance of the Vernal Pool there, if you actually do have to move it out five, five feet over, is it just to basically extend the quantity of bridge?
Yes, and what happens is the helical piles will have to go in the water. It could be six or seven piles going in the water, or if I place it at a, the far extreme rate like what I have designed now, the number of piles will be staying, but most, the number of piles in the, in the water will be less, in the pool will be less. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Narayana, it's just so unclear. Your, your proposal is to place the driveway right against, up against the, the border of your property.
The lot line.
On the right up against the lot line, a better way to put it. And that would be for about a hundred and ninety-three feet approximately.
Possibly, yes, yes, right.
And the they're going to be about the helical piles, as you refer to them, it'd be about four to six inches in diameter, off the ground?
No, no, it'll, it'll be, it'll be the diameter of the piles itself.
I see, okay.
They, they would, they would be probably about a foot and a half or a foot from the ground level. It's not going to be a gigantic bridge where you will see the bridge from the road level, so it's going to be a very low-level bridge.
Where, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It only needs to be there so that minimizes the, the impact on the Vernal Pool.
Okay. Where would rainwater run off from this driveway?
They, the Khancom had indicated that I need to come back with a plan. The plan is to slope the bridge towards the street and then put a drainage system to collect the water and then connect it to the stormwater drain of the town.
And what about?
Yeah.
What about? What about snow plowing? Where would snow be plowed?
It will be plowed into my land portion on the other side.
When you say land portion on the other side, if you've got a foot of snow and the plow is starting from the street level, the snow is going to have to go someplace before it gets all the way to the other side of your property. Isn't it going to go over into the Butters, Buttersland?
No, it, it won't be, it can be carried up forward. Or we could probably design a melting, using the geothermal, we can use coils to heat up the system and melt it.
And
That's, that's another plan to have a geothermal well in there.
Okay, and, and the reason you're requesting that the, the driveway be up against the abutting land as opposed to five feet removed from the budding, abutting land is to
It's to totally minimize, minimize the impact.
Minimize the impact on the.
On the Vernal Pool, right.
Vernal Pool?
Yes.
Okay.
It, it could be five feet, or it could be less too.
Okay, what's the what's the material that the driveway is going to be made from?
Standard driveway, the asphalt material that everybody uses, yeah, and then the underneath will be probably a steel deck to hold it.
Okay.
And I'm also required to make sure the water doesn't spill over the bridge into the pool, so I need to make sure I put a sufficient guard to get the wat, rainwater to move towards the center of the road and then move through.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any further questions. Anyone on the board have any other questions at this point before we open the matter to public hearing, a public comment, excuse me?
I don't.
Um, I guess I'd like to dig in a little bit more because it seems to me that we have this on a fairly narrow question, right? We have this on the question of whether or not the building commissioner erred in finding that it was possible to build the driveway five feet out. Right, and so if we find that building the driveway five feet out is possible, then we are voting to uphold the building commissioner's letter. Um, so it sounds to me like it's possible, right? It, it impacts the Vernal Pools more than I think any of us would like. But what in this presentation, and this is the question to the applicant, what in this presentation shows that it is not possible to build five feet out?
Are you, is there a question for me?
Yes, that's the question.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is possible to build it, it's not, the only impact is the one that I am looking for, that's all. So the relief is to preserve better part of the Vernal Pool.
All right, thank you.
And are any other questions before we open it for public comment from the board? No, okay. Peter, if you could bring back the, the full screen?
Uh, yes, I am. Sorry, I am trying to.
No, we're, we're, we're good now, I think.
Okay, G, I just had the, I, the applicant, I just asked him to stop changing the screen, sorry about that.
Oh, there we go.
Tried to remove the screens here. So thank you so much. If you would like to speak on this topic, please raise your hand. Number one, please, with all due respect, Mark DeSoni, you did have your raised, your hand raised first, so please cite your name and.
And before we start, there are a number of people. I'm anticipating that there will be a number of people speaking, so if you could, please limit your initial comments to five minutes, and if we get through everybody having an opportunity to speak, if there's additional time, we can, we can go back if that, if that's all right with everybody. Yes, Mark, go ahead, welcome.
Welcome, good evening, Mark DeSoni, Forty-Nine Hawthorne Road. And five minutes, that's a lot of time for me.
Well, Mark, don't feel like you have to fill it up.
Oh, don't worry, I probably, I'll probably be under four. I'm gonna be asking a few, a few short questions, and this will be to the applicant KG. Good evening, KG.
Thank you.
On the land that you're gonna build that bridge on, if it's okay to ask, has it been surveyed?
Uh, may I, the chair?
Normally, we ask the questions to be directed through the chair, however.
Chair, the KG.
I find that to be a somewhat cumbersome project. So as long as the questions are being asked respectfully, and Mr. Narayama does not object to answering the question directly, why don't we proceed that way for purposes of speeding the process along? How would that be for everybody?
Thank you for me, appreciate it.
Okay.
Uh, Mark, yes, I have surveyed it, and that's the diagram that I showed you.
Okay, and for the, again, through the chairman, to KG, is the ground tested to be solid enough to work on?
Um, no, the soil sample of getting the, what do you call, the bearing capacity has not been done because we need to go before the Khancom to go over the land, to cut the trees, or do anything, move the equipment, all of that comes only when the the approval for the road is given. Access, if there is no access, there's no point in going in and testing any soils, bearing capacity and everything behind the wetland.
Okay, again, thank you, Mr. Schaller, for bearing the time with me, and thank KG for answering. One more would be the is there go, is there gonna be any sort of tools of the works that we worked on, and what are they?
Uh, I, I, I don't understand that question in terms of what tools you're talking about.
Um, hi, how are you gonna construct the bridge?
Oh, it's helical piles, and then you dig the piles in and then lay the bridge on top of its deck and then complete the deck and then pour the concrete on top of it, I guess that's what they do usually.
Since I'm not a bridge builder, I, I, I don't know. And my last question to the chairman to KG, what, what contents are the halogen piles made out of?
It's usually, um, galvanized steel.
Oh, those like posts?
Yes, they get, they need to hold the weight of a, uh, moving vehicles up to the order of a fully loaded fire truck.
So this is almost like a driveway road construction, so the.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, next, um.
I have Kate Cowan, uh, chair.
And if you would just identify yourself and address before speaking. And Kate, you're muted, I, there you go.
Hi, sorry, Catherine Crowe, two thirty-two Prospect Street. Um, I'm one of the abutting property owners, I just wanted to state my objection for the record to having a driveway built on my property line.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Peter, who's next?
Next up is Miss Pam Mims. Pam, please state your address and name, please.
Pam Mims, Raymond Way in Ashland. Um, I just, I'll go through this very quickly, um, since given five minutes, I do want to say that um, this is an open meeting for the residents, it's a hot button issue at this point, and I would ask and expect that the board would be willing to give the residents their due time, because this is an issue. Um, so I have a presentation that I'd like to share and I'll share it quickly, and then Patty, you can chime in on this presentation as well. Uh, could you, Peter, could you open this up so I could share the screen? It says host disabled participants sharing screen.
Is that okay, uh, to the chair?
Yes, fine with me.
Pam, uh, Mims, Miss Mims, I am, I've made you a co-host.
Okay. Soon as I can get to the screen. Alright. Okay, you should be able to see the screen at this point. Um, the first, I just want to at least uh discuss that um, in the introduction that Mr. Nariana was well aware of this property that he purchased, was well aware that it was zoned as one thirty food, one thirty-two undevelopable vacant land. And so um regarding this, there'd be no reason based upon this that he he knowingly purchased land that was not developed, and now he's asking for it to be developed. And so I'm asking that the zoning board of appeals here would, and I didn't see the latest letter, but the zoning board of appeals denied the driveway. Mr. Nariana has a few claims here, and he states that he comes under the exemption due to the May eleventh, two thousand and five meeting. Because the land was subdivided. This property was not subdivided. Um, you know, subdivision based on Mass General Law Chapter forty-one, section eighty-one L. Uh, in terms of a subdivided tract is a tract of land that's owned by one owner and it's divided. Um, he utilizes the Oakwood Estates as um part of his property in that he can subdivide it. It, Oakwood Estates is a completely different piece of land than his land, he was not part of that at all. Uh, so I did want to bring that up. Uh, the next, he states again that um it should go from five feet to zero because of a uh financial hardship, and I'll speak to this in a moment. But this, and you all know this, there's several conditions to meet a financial hardship. Even if it's just a hardship, it has to be a substantial hardship. Using the case furlong versus zoning board of fields in Salem, there was a hardship there, and it was for public safety reasons as to why this variance was granted. Initially was denied, but then it was approved. So I have some pictures here that we're gonna go through, but I'll, I'll come back to the pictures and I'll squeeze it in in my five minutes. Financial hardship, you can see this here and read this on the screen yourself, you sold many properties. That's hard to make a case that it's financial hardship. Uh, you know, when he has just recently sold one point five million dollars worth of property. And I'm gonna come back to these pitches again, I'll, I'll make sure that I get in the five minutes. Minimal impact to the wetland areas, the most minimal impact is if nothing was built there. This is wetlands with a vernal pool. The state of Massachusetts looks pretty, not even state, it's federal government, looks pretty dimly upon uh building on a vernal pool. Um, or building through a vernal pool. It's not gonna have a diminutive impact, it's gonna be a substantial impact. And then the appeals process, I just want to recall, remind everyone that the appeals process, you can't introduce new evidence in the appeals process. I pulled something out from the ABA. So here, it seems like the board has allowed new information through the appeals process. You can't relitigate issues, and this is even administrative boards, but I'm just making the statement at this point that it appears that the board is allowing new information on an appeal, which it's, there's no new evidence on appeal. Okay, and lastly, the issues here are, the field card was missing. I wanted to see the field card on that property. Mr. Ball stated here, if I can open this up, that there was no field card on the property because it was mysteriously missing. So that was definitely a concern. And this is the email here, which I'm happy to send to everyone. He doesn't know where the field card is on that property. He also said that many field cards on the properties are missing, so I'm going to state on the record now that I'm requesting that the town of Ashland do a uh survey of every single property in this town, because if we're having missing property cards and zero Prospect Street is one that's actually missing. So I requested that, there's no
Ms. Mims, that is not the purpose of the hearing tonight. Uh, and we're going very, very, very far afield. Um, and I do believe you need to wrap up, we, the matter before the board is whether or not to uphold the decision of the building commissioner denying the applicant's request to build a driveway uh on the property line and not on the five-foot line. That is the sole issue that the zoning board of appeals is dealing with tonight. And we are considering all the evidence that our town council said it was proper for us to consider. Your opinion notwithstanding.
I do not agree with it. Here's water, and Miss Powell can speak to this, because she does have five minutes. And this is water on her backyard from the property line. Okay, so if we need to go to another five minutes, and I'm, I'm sorry that we have, this is an open meeting, it should, all residents should be able to speak. Here, it's clear that all residents
John, may I speak? John?
Uh, I don't know who's talking, so.
Uh, it's Brian from the board. Um, John, why don't we give everyone five minutes and then they can come back around if they need
That's what I thought I had said, but
Okay, well, we're well past the five minutes at this
I appreciate that, so if you could just quickly wrap up your presentation, I see claim two, hopefully you can wrap up claim two and we'll move on to the next person, and then we, if there is time, and I'm sure there will be, we can come back to uh complete, but again, I would ask everyone to limit their comments to the issue that's before this board, which is whether or not to uphold the decision of the building commissioner which denied the applicant's uh request to build a driveway uh up against his property line as opposed to the five-foot line.
I will wrap this up by saying that I do not agree with this. And I will come back around if you will allow me the time, otherwise we'll take it to another venue. Thank you.
I'm not sure what that means to be a threat or not by another venue, but obviously, as Mr. Nariama said, there are many different committees and boards that he has to go before on this process, so that being said, um, it looks like perhaps Mr. Kane is the next one with his hand raised. Do I have that correct, Peter?
Uh, yes, that would be Mr., excuse me, uh, Ms. Mims, can you please stop sharing your screen, uh, so we can move on? That would be, thanks so much. Actually, it would be Mr. Mark Walsh, Mr. Mark Walsh. Um, and, uh, John, I gotta start a timer on my phone, uh, and keep track of you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Walsh, please step forward and uh introduce yourself.
Alright, my name is I'm in a room with my wife standing by, what's your religious or audio? My name's Mark Sullivan Walsh, I've been a resident here since the early seventies, my wife lived here since the forties. And I'm here to tell you uh the consequences that families have to suffer for at uh, for errors that are made by this board, because we're one of them. And um that is wetland down there, and it's wetland up here. I see his, uh, um JK, whatever his name is, the guy that served on the uh planning board there, uh, excuse me, on the uh, um
Conservation.
Order of Health, uh, who's uh, the applicant here. Um, he mentioned a drainage, um, um, drain, but there were none, there's, there's nowhere for it to go. Uh, this was a lengthy conversation, uh, in, um in November fifteenth of two thousand and five, we had a storm here that flooded the entire uh inset, uh, that he initially showed right up to the uh Meadowbrook Lane, number two and number four. Uh, it destroyed the house that my wife grew up in, we had to bring in another house afterwards. And uh, because the sewer pumping station that's located uh just about diagonally directly across from where he intends to build a bridge in, in, in the vernal pool. Um, it, it's a sewer pumping station that is overtaxed now, and they're also talking about putting additional uh load upon the thing. And I'm telling you, that this has gotta stop somewhere. I saw, I don't know, I, I, in a Concom meeting and they said, oh, well, this will get stopped further up the road. And I don't think everybody should share that attitude. Because I think it needs to be stopped now, I think that JK um knows uh plenty to do, and if this was, I, I still like to ask, students here if I may, if this was part of the sales in the Dexter Blouse administration and uh, in the fall and um winter of uh two thousand and seven, when uh there were yellow cards, little yellow for sale cards placed on various properties around here, one was right across the street must, they were offered to buy by butters. Uh, you know, to uh, for, you know, enhancements of their property, but they were, it was stated at that time that they were not buildable. It was stated at that time, I was surprised to hear that uh he got it around two thousand and eight, I figured he got it uh elsewhere, but it was probably sold through uh that same deal where about ten of them around here uh went. Um, little yellow um for sale signs were tacked up on trees and they offered the butters uh for anyone who wanted to purchase them. So um, I am hoping that you guys uphold uh the building commissioner's uh idea to not uh to not um grant the uh, the bridge or the driveway or whatever, and put a stop to this now. And uh, you know, without threat, that, you know, lit- litigation, you know, and people need to be responsible for these decisions. Um, especially when they adverse someone to the, to the financial degree and, and the rest of the problems that's imposed on this man. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Um, Peter, who's next? Is now, is it Mr. Kane?
It is, it's Mr. William Kane, Mr. William Kane, please unmute yourself and introduce yourself to the board.
Great, thank you, uh, William Kane, uh, at thirty Raymond Way, uh, we're a director butter to this property. Uh, and I just wanted to, to ask you to uphold the building, uh, uh inspector's decision denying the appeal. Uh, we're, we're one of the neighbors, I think, that he referenced that denied an easement. Um, we had to do that, really, we, we were putting a, a conservation restriction on the land, two acres that directly abuts this property. Uh, there's wetlands there, it's a vernal pool. Uh, another vernal pool separate from the one discussed earlier on our, on our property there. Uh, we worked very closely with the Con Commission and the Select Board to restrict all that in the last couple of years, so I, I, I just, I would urge you to vote, um, to deny this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Peter is?
Miss Patty Burns.
Welcome.
Hi, thanks for uh having me and having all of us here tonight. I respect the hard work that the zone, all of the boards do. Um, every night you all come out and listen to the public, so bravo. I, I'm a principal consultant with Davy Resource Group.
If you could just identify yourself by name and address, please, just for the record.
Patricia Burns. And the, the address is three Industrial Drive, Shrewsbury.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, I'm a professional wetland scientist, I have over thirty years of experience on sites not unlike this, with permitting issues that are pretty profound. Um, I'm trying to stick to that five-foot uh story that we talked about. I want to just remind everyone, it's two hundred feet long. So whether it goes through the wetlands or whether it goes alongside of the wetlands, two hundred feet of drainage will, and also hard, hards- um, hardscape material will impact the, the wetlands. The certified vernal pool, these aren't just vernal pools, there's six certified vernal pools, three of them have a hundred-foot buffers that extend onto this property, not twenty-five-foot buffers. These are highly prized wetlands in the state. The drainage from two hundred feet to Prospect Street that is being discussed is quite a feat. And it will end up on Prospect Street, which everyone knows already floods. And I've seen numbers of photos of that. There is not a twenty-five-foot buffer, as I said, there's a hundred-foot buffer. And the house location, and we're not really talking about that, but just to, to bring some light to this, the proposed footprint of development for the house is situated one hundred percent inside a vernal pool buffer. Those are really important things to say, and I know that Pam had, um, Pam and I had created another PowerPoint that shows the flooding behind the homes. It is extraordinary and really worth seeing. If we can't see it right now, to be able to show it uh before the end of the evening will be important.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Ms. Powell, next, Peter?
I have, uh, miss, I, on my queue, I have, uh, one, two, three, four.
Oh, okay.
I don't know who that person is, so.
Well, one, two, three, four, you're going to have to identify yourself by name, uh, unless your name is one, two, three, four, and also address.
My name is not one, two, three, four, it's Chris Lombardo, eight Raymond Way. I am the direct, director butter of KG's uh land, um, and I just wanted to state that that, wherever he wants to put that driveway is underwater in the springtime and in the wintertime. I have a river that runs through the back of my yard from vernal pool to vernal pool that overflows into one, they, they, they overflow from one to another. Uh, the water gets up to the street level, sidewalk level, okay? His bridge is gonna be underwater, which is gonna do nothing but impact my backyard. It is already a skating rink as it is in the wintertime. So I don't know what he's, you know, uh, what he's trying to do by putting a bridge there. You'd have to see it to believe it, I mean, it's, it's, you can skate out there. Um, so I, I just want to say for the record that I'm opposed to any driveway going through the back of my yard. Not to mention, it's, it's twenty feet off my house. Uh, that's it for me, uh, can my wife have the, my other couple of minutes?
Certainly.
Yes, she is.
Hi, good evening, my name is Rachel Lombardo, I also am at eight Raymond Way. And, um, my husband basically took all of my words, but I would like to say that I also am opposed to what Mr. Nariana would love to do. Uh, one of the reasons that I invested and bought this house uh back on July first of nineteen ninety-nine was that I was aware of what my backyard was, and I knew that it was undevelopable at the time due to it being wetlands and vernal pool. I thought that I could look out my backyard and just see the woods, and that was very appealing to me at the time. Um, now with this being done, I'm very concerned about a driveway coming basically, if, that the driveway, if we're narrowing it down, this conversation down to just the driveway, his driveway will be on my property, literally on my property. So Mr. Nariana talks about safety issues and the fire department, and the driveway has to be wide enough. Any fire truck goes over that bridge is going to sink it. It's going, I don't, and first of all, you can't even put asphalt. It's going, I don't, and first of all, you can't even put asphalt in a Vernal Pool, it makes no sense at all. So I I I'm, I I don't understand where he's coming from, but I am very opposed to him putting a driveway. And a building in my backyard. And I I will leave that and I I will give Pam Pam Mims my other two minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, next is Anita, I think. Miss Paul. Do I have that correct, Peter?
Uh, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I skipped over Yvonne Powell, who I was trying to jump ahead of the people that just spoke, so my apologies. And Ms. Powell, I think we're all set for you as soon as you unmute yourself. You're muted, Ms. Powell. There we go.
Yvonne Powell, two twenty-four Prospect Street. I am against is building a road, uh no matter how how, bridge, road, whatever. Pam has pictures of my backyard, I give Pam my my minutes that will be left over. We have lived here since the sixties. We have dealt with a flooded backyard and cellar from the wetland next door to us. Um. My my fear is that uh 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 it's just gonna push more water over to us. I I I can't talk any further, I give my minutes to Pam.
Okay, thank you.
I am, I I just oppose this whole thing.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for telling us your position. Um, Peter, who is next?
Uh, next up is, uh, I can't read the name, I'm sorry.
Looks like Anita.
Anita.
Siagras, perhaps? And I apologize for mispronouncing the name if I have done so.
Oh, no. Hi, this is Anita, you did a good job with my name.
Thank you.
Um, so I am across the street from the property, I'm at two twenty-five Prospect Street. Um, and I know tonight our topic is narrowly focused on the specific issue of moving the driveway. However, I I'm happy you're expanding it a little bit because um we we do need to expand the conversation. Um, first of all, uh I know the property was surveyed, but it was surveyed during a drought, we've had a remarkable drought. Um, I have lived here for twenty years and I have had about three or four floods. Um, Chris Lombardo is my plumber, so he can attest to the fact that he's probably seen, you know, damage in my basement. Um, it's a very low-lying area here, Prospect Street floods all the time, all of my surrounding neighbors are constantly battling water. You know, we have some pumps going, um drainage systems, the yards flood, the street floods. And then, as Mark Walsh was saying, there is the pumping station, um the sewer pumping station, which has backed up before and actually started to come into the house. Um, what I'm concerned about, I I I don't mind if um the applicant wants to build a house, it's fine, it's wonderful. Uh, you know, everyone, if you own property and you want to build it, that's fine. But this is a special situation, it's a wetland in a low-lying area with close neighbors. And I I understand that he bought the property, I think he was told at the time that it was not buildable. And so if he wants to build a house in the in the driveway and do this heavy construction. Is this going to impact the drainage of the area and push the water, which I'm constantly fighting closer to my property? So for that reason, I oppose, I oppose the um the variance, um the appeal. And I I I wish the applicant luck, but I think that he made a mistake in purchasing the land if he intended to build a residence there. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Peter, is there anybody else that wished to be heard before we go uh back to uh Ms. Mims?
Mr. Mark, there's only has his hand up, just to note, Ms. Mims did not have her hand up. But I just also want to note that Miss Patty Burns, RDJ, excuse me, RDG, for the public record, introduce yourself, is three Industrial Way, Shrewsbury, Massachusetts. Not Ashland, Massachusetts.
Correct, no, I I got that, she's a a professional environmental consultant, which she indicated. We just wanted to draw that. Okay, well, um, Mark, you were the first one to speak, so if we're going back for second rounds, we'll go back briefly to you. Uh, before we go back to uh Ms. Mims, who um we told there would be time for her after we finished the first round. So, Mark, if you could be brief?
Hey, very brief, thank you. It's my usual question I ask after you do first rounds of public comments. If you can answer, Mr. Chairman, what's gonna be the next steps once public comments is over?
Well, our typical process in a public hearing is we will close public comment and then the board will enter into discussion. When we discuss what the issues before us are, what the evidence we heard is. Uh, if we have any further questions of the applicant at that point, you can ask them. Uh, but we generally get a sense of what we expect our decision to be. And then we would ask um the town planner to draft a decision consistent with those thoughts. And we would continue the hearing to our next meeting, at which point we would enter into deliberations. And make a decision uh and take a vote. So I anticipate that will be our process tonight, unless there is disagreement from the uh board members. And Brian Forrestall and Nathan Band and myself, as the members of the ZBA will be sitting. But Stuart Segal and Anton Tacoma are as our associate members, uh will also participate in the uh discussion this evening. But will not be voting on the uh on the ultimate decision. Okay? Okay, Mark is shaking his head, yes. Um, Ms. Mims, we promised to go back to you for a second round and, oh, there you are at the very top. Uh, and why don't you go ahead and I see Mr. Nuriyama also has his hand up, uh as does Ms. Burns, so. Uh, Ms. Mims, we'll start with you. Uh, and again, remember the issue that is before the board tonight. Is to whether or not to uphold the building commissioner's denial of the request to build the driveway. With zero side frontage as opposed to five feet, which the zoning ordinances require. That's the issue we're dealing with tonight, not any conservation issues.
Thank you. I'm gonna let Patty speak, but I would ask that the building inspector is a qualified um licensed inspector. What he has presented and he denied it based upon the law. And I would ask that the board upholds the law, follows the law and follows the procedures of law. So Patty, I'm gonna have Patty speak to these slides if I could have the screen. Peter, I'd appreciate it, I'm gonna ask for it at this point.
And how many slides are we going to be going through?
Um, we're just gonna go through a few slides to show some of the water in the concern, which speaks directly to the driveway.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Patty, you can speak to this and I'll go through them quickly, you tell me where you want to go on this.
Okay, um, you can move right ahead. Uh, I do have a question, can you construct a road in a ten-foot-wide road without temporary impacts on either side? So if that's the case, will the impacts go to the Vernal Pond? Or will they go to the neighbors' yards? And we can go through these, but these are just to show you how much research we've done on this area. To uh get it, our arms around it and keep moving, Pam, I do want to stop here. I want to show that where the, one more, back, back one, there you go, okay. Just this is the uh green, in the green is the house. That's not the footprint of disturbance, it doesn't include sheds or driveways or turnarounds. Because as it looks right now, you'd have to back out those two hundred feet. It doesn't include any of those extra pieces, this is also a dramatically flooded area. Dramatically flooded and many of our photos that come up show that. These are some questions that I had of um from my original view, and I really think the important one right now is. How do you construct a ten-foot-wide road without impacting adjacent areas? At least temporarily. This is, this is where we start the photos, uh these, this is a, these are flooded areas. On zero Prospect Street in the upper area, this is the high ground behind fourteen and eight Raymond Way. You can go to the next one, this is where the proposed uh footprint of disturbance is. This is another photo that shows dead white oak trees behind the homes on Raymond Way. These are dead because there's so much water out there, white white oak can't handle that much water. This is another uh photo that is also behind the uh fourteen and eight, I think it's right behind fourteen. Where that building envelope is going to be. And more of the same, these are all taken in different years, not all of them were identified. People do their best to document their photos and these were things that different met, different neighbors gave to me. Uh, same thing here, this is behind twenty Raymond Way, uh this is, I don't know, Pam, do you know when that was photo- photoed?
Uh, I don't recall.
Okay, keep going, and this is also in quote uplands. Again, in the uplands where they will be building the house. This is where the two hundred foot long road will end. Again, right up here on the fence, that's uh right by where the road will go. Again, more of the same, another flood in the uh the area that's going to be developed. Uh, these are, these are indicators that that were taken to evaluate the um the study in two thousand and one. That uh one of the neighbors just spoke about, um and you can see that they can, the uh. The residents took some really interesting depths, we're talking ten inches of water in the uplands. Once again, uplands with water.
Okay, Ms. Burns, I I know.
You're done.
You're done.
And we're done, I would love to show you the videos, it's just.
I I I. You know, I I appreciate it and perhaps if the applicant ultimately appears before the Conservation Commission, you will have an opportunity to do that.
And we do.
Mr. Nuriyama does have his hand up and I am going to um. Give him the opportunity to reply, I think it's a little bit unusual for the applicant to be applying, replying as part of the public comment. But there's been so much uh so much raised, I think it would be unfair not to allow him to at least address some of the matters. And again, focusing on the issue of whether the building commissioner was correct in denying. The request to have a zero-foot setback as opposed to a five-foot setback for the driveway. Which was the only issue that the ZBA is dealing with tonight.
Thank you, Chair, I appreciate it. Uh, there were some comments made saying that I wrongly used the Oakwood Estate. Oakwood Estate was used to demonstrate that the neighborhood had a seventy-five-foot frontage. And uh my lot was originally purchased by Alden Graffman in the nineteen tens or elevens from uh. Someone along with the remaining hundred and twenty-seven acres, that was one owner. And he owned it and that's got subdivided because he sold pieces of property every year and made his revenue out of it to live by. So this was one of those properties that he'd left it without selling it to somebody when he sold it along with the. The property on the left side and right side, so this was subdivided in nineteen fifty and then this record was presented to the. A Planning Board Department, Peter Mathick, as well as the Building Commissioner before. And they agreed on the evidence that I had. And I had also the question about unbuildable lot and then the definitions were unclear, they told me that there is nothing saying that is unbuildable, that's only classified for tax purposes only. That was what Richard Ball from the Tax Department told me. And the drainage issue was brought up by Mr. Mark Walsh. I did say that that there going to be a drainage, storm drainage system on the road, which will collect it and connect directly to the. The summer to drain in the town, based on the email that I've had with Mr. Evans of the DPWD. And if they permit me, that will be connected, so that will not affect the flooding area, because it won't increase the flooding, it will only decrease the flooding. Only issue that uh Mr. Chair had was the snow issue that either could be removed if this small amount, a bit large amount, then it needed to be melted and there could be provisions. Done through geophys- geothermal heating, coils could be put under the road surface and then heated and melted, that's possible. Thank you, sir, I appreciate it for your time.
Thank you, okay, um. I see two more hands up, but they are people, one of whom has spoken once and one whom has spoken twice. So unless there's something specifically to address this issue. The Chair is going to ask for a motion to close public comment. I think the issues have been made clear by everyone that's spoken um as to what what their positions are. So unless there's something new, um.
Mr. Chair, I would ask that you've given Mr. Nariana quite a bit of latitude, even speaking during public comment. That you would provide the public with that lati- that same latitude, I would ask that.
Ms. Mims, I think your latitude that's been given to you has been uh extended exceedingly. And rather than listen to the speech, why don't you go right to the point you want to make, we'll give you two minutes. This will be your third time at the microphone and I think at a public hearing, that's more than adequate on the simple issue. Of whether we should uphold the decision of the zone building commissioner, that's the issue. Not whether there are wetlands that can't be built on or that the Concom is gonna have to decide about what can be built over Vernal Pools. That's not what's before us.
I would ask that you would uphold the issue, not to repeat, but in terms of the land and the parceling of the land from nineteen fifty, I do not agree with that.
Well, and that's totally irrelevant to what we're deciding tonight, so I'm gonna cut you off right there, because we're not gonna go back seventy-five years to how property was acquired by somebody. When we're being asked to uphold.
Nariana was given that latitude to do that, so I won't say anymore, but I'm just making that one point, thank you.
Your point is noted, um.
I second your motion, John.
Uh, how about me?
Okay, hold on a minute, Mr. Walsh, I know you talked once before, what do you have to say, you got two minutes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your work and I appreciate the work that JK has done uh for the Health Department. But I'm here to tell you, uh I've got pictures that occurred on um the date that I aforementioned. Uh, the uh manhole covers being physically raised by the water pressure, okay? Uh, so uh here's a redirection of that into any sewer generation, which uh sewers are not for uh not for that purpose. Uh, enough I have to sell a former member of the uh of the Health Department.
Well, Mr. Walsh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off right there, because your point has been made. And I don't think we gather, we gain anything by going forward further with it, we have one more person that wishes to be heard once again. And then we will have a motion to close public comment. And there you go, Ms. Siagras?
Anita, yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, real quick point that I just wanted to raise is that um if everyone could take into consideration the fact that. Um, a little bit of what Mark was saying, that when there's a big storm or a big thaw. Our town sewer does not handle the water runoff well at all. Uh, so I understand that uh the applicant wants to pipe the water into our town sewer. It and it it may not be able to handle substantial runoff, I think that the Vernal Pool in that wetland area has helped to keep water. Um, away from properties, um so I don't think the town sewer solution is um ironclad and I just wish you could all consider that too. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Um, Chair would entertain a motion to, um,
So moved.
End public comment. And there was a so moved by Brian. Um, is there a second? Nathan seconded. I, John Trefeather, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Nathan Band, vote in favor.
Okay, that closes public comment. And then as we usually do, we sort of enter into an informal discussion about the issues that are before us, the evidence that we've heard and what we may, what we may think an ultimate decision should be. Again, sitting on the hearing as a deciding votes would be Brian Forrestall, Nathan Band and myself. But also participating in the, um, discussion we're about to have is Stuart Segal and Anton Tukomorov. Um, starting off, um, Nathan, I think you hit the nail on the head uh, way back when in the early stages of the hearing, which is the building commissioner. The bylaws provide that there should be a five-foot setback for a driveway whenever possible. And have we heard anything tonight that indicates it's not possible for a driveway to be built five feet as opposed to zero feet? And the application before the commissioner was simply to waive the, uh, setback requirement and allow, uh, a zero-foot setback. And I, I, I haven't heard anything frankly. Brian, your thoughts?
Hello?
Um, my thoughts are, um, we should not waive the zero.
I, I got it.
Sorry about that, folks. Um, Nathan, your thoughts?
Um, my thoughts haven't changed since I posed the question to the applicant initially. I didn't see any evidence in the application that showed it was not possible. And the applicant, applicant in answer to my question said it was possible.
Yeah. Stuart? Thoughts on the matter?
Hold on.
I agree. I agree with the consensus that, uh, that, uh, Nathan has come to and also, uh, Brian has come to.
Okay, excellent. Anton?
Yeah, I feel that, that Nathan is right. I, I don't really feel that we really got any evidence both ways, except for Mr. Narayana's statement that he could build it over the vernal pool. So I agree with the board.
And again, it's not a question of what might be preferable from an environmental aspect. It's whether it's possible or not. And I, I would agree with what everyone has said, but I've heard no evidence that said it's not possible to, uh, build it from a five-foot, uh, with a five-foot setback. So I would vote in favor of, of upholding the building commissioner as well. Uh, that being said, do we want to? Oh, we're gonna have to come back anyways to, uh, review a decision and sign it. Uh, so perhaps, Peter, with the, uh, discussion that we've had, I think you probably can draft a hearing decision upholding the building commissioner's, uh, denial?
Uh, I can do that, yes.
Okay, uh, why don't you do that and we will continue the hearing until our next meeting, when we will then review the decision and take a formal vote. Meet with everybody's approval. Now, our next meeting typically would be the fourth Thursday of the month, which is December twenty-seventh. Um, I know at least two people are not going to be present during that week, so I think we need to not meet on November twenty-seventh, but rather our next scheduled meeting, which would be January tenth. Tenth. Um,
Would we have a quorum on the twenty-seventh, John?
Um, we would not have someone to run the meeting because Peter is one of those that is not going to be able to be present. So, um, I suppose technically we could meet at Town Hall and, but I am very reluctant to, uh, to proceed without our, uh, planning department support staff, um, uh, with a, with a proceeding. Uh, timing wise.
I understand.
We are within the necessary. Now, having said that, is January tenth the problem for, for people that will not be here on January tenth? Doesn't sound, doesn't sound like it. Um, okay, then why don't, why don't, uh, someone like to make a motion to continue the hearing to, uh, Tuesday, January tenth at seven P M?
So moved.
Moved.
And is there a second? Uh, I did hear a second from Nathan, I think. I, John Trefeather, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Nathan Band, vote in favor.
Okay, and Stuart and Anton, I, I guess you don't need to vote to continue the, uh, the hearing. Okay, then we are all set for, uh, this hearing for this evening. Uh, thank you, everybody, for your participation. And we can now move on to the next item in our agenda, which is approval of the meeting minutes from our November twenty-second twenty-twenty-two, uh, meeting. Uh, this was the last set of minutes that Emma sent to us. So, um, did anybody have any proposed changes, the questions in the minutes?
I did not have any changes.
Okay, Nathan? Nathan's good. Stuart, Anton, you all set?
I'm good.
I'm all set. A motion to approve the minutes then by somebody?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Oh, we got seconds and thirds and fourths there. Okay, I, John Trefeather, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Nathan Band, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Segal, vote in favor.
Excellent. Um, very good. Next and last item on the agenda is staff updates and administrative matters. Uh, Peter, any updates that we need to know of?
I have nothing really, uh, just to, you know, where we put out the posting for the assistant planner job, we're gonna go through those and start the interview process. Uh, that's the latest and greatest, I can tell you. Uh, but obviously I want to thank everybody for understanding, uh, the holiday schedule with the timing of the next meeting. But, uh, other than that, I think I'm all set. Thank you so much.
And is there anything in the pipeline by way of hearings, uh, or applications? No?
Nothing that's come across my desk yet. So I think, uh, you know, I think there's gonna be a little lull. Uh, there's always typical lull around the holidays. I'm sure there'll be something, uh, coming up in the year.
Okay, well then, wish everybody happy holidays, happy new year. We will see you in twenty-twenty-three and I guess I need to have a formal motion to end the, uh, amend the meeting.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
I, John Trefeather, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Nathan Band, in favor.
I, Stuart Segal, vote in favor.
I, Anton Tukomorov, vote in favor. Happy holidays, everyone.
Yes, thank you. Good night, everybody.
Bye-bye.